The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of February 14, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with the council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on this afternoon's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards regarding items listed on tonight's agenda nor for items that are not listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reports item 3A, staff report from city attorney regarding potential amendment to charter council salary.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We have a PowerPoint presentation for you, and this afternoon I'm going to be talking to you about a potential charter amendment specifically related to council salary. A little bit of recap before we get into the meat of it. You may recall that back in June of last year at the 3:30 meeting, Moss Adams came to you and provided an overview of the city charter and presented to you a couple of different areas of the charter that could be modified to bring it into, let's say, a more modern document. At the conclusion of that meeting, there was a referral to the city attorney's office to return and give you some historical context, in particular for how the council would move forward if you wanted to move forward with a pay ballot measure in the year 2024. You also requested at the time that when we do the comparisons that we included the city of Oakland and the city of Long Beach in our analysis. So about 45 days later, I came back to you. That was on August 9 of 2023, and I think it's important to realize that neither councilmembers Freeman or Cor were at that particular meeting. It was at 3:30, and Ashley Zombra no listened to the video of that particular meeting so that I could accurately portray it to you. Again, I think it's important to kind of understand the backdrop there, but after I gave the PowerPoint presentation, which was about 17 minutes, the vice mayor made a motion. You can see that on the screen. It was a motion to continue discussion to potentially bring forward items at the general election, which would be this year, November of 2024. And we then went into a discussion. I was really not part of that discussion. You had about a 17-minute discussion with primarily councilmember Clegg. Some of you voiced your opinions on the council pay issue, but it primarily was a discussion after that as to some of the other issues that you perhaps had an opportunity to address, whether it was changing the pronouns within the charter or changing the franchise situation or changing the civil service rules. Really wasn't any direction, and the mayor then said, well, you have a motion. Cast your votes. And the motion passed three to two with councilmembers Weir and Gray dissenting. So I say that to you because in taking away from that meeting, the really the one thing that I took away from that meeting is that you did not want the council pay issue to go in March of 2024, which is good because here we are. But other than that, there really wasn't any other direct direction to the city attorney's office to prepare for any type of ballot measure relative to council pay. So fast forward to last month, January 28 of 2024, city manager Clegg came to you, again, gave you an overview, kind of gave you an update of the spectrum of some of those items that could be put on the next ballot on November of 2024 with regard to a charter update. And again, there was a referral to the city attorney's office to revisit the council pay options and come back to you for a discussion. So it is in that vein, is with that backdrop, that I am presenting the PowerPoint to you tonight. I will go through and tell you where the PowerPoint differs from August, but primarily this is a mirror image of what was presented to you in August of last year. And again, I started back then with a little bit of the history, and I just find it, I think you'll find it, maybe amusing is not the right word, but I think it's certainly interesting. But we were officially incorporated back in 1873, and we ran out of money. And so we had to disincorporate, and we did not really reincorporate until 1898, and our charter was not ratified until 1915. And our charter has about 12 articles to it. I did back in August explain to you the difference between a charter and a general law city. I don't think there's a need to go into that today. Suffice it to say that there are over 480 cities in the state of California, and there's only about 125 that are charter cities, and we're one of them. So we're in the minority there. But why does that matter for the discussion today? Well, it matters because when one amends a charter, you amend the charter the same way that one enacted the charter. And when we enacted it in 1915, it went to the voters. So if we want to amend the charter, we have to go to a general election. That's going to cost money. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that at the end of this presentation. Or you can, at certain times, you can receive petitions by 15% of the registered voters that reside within the city of Bakersfield. And typically, when you're presented with something like that, it's a formality that the council simply approves it, and again, it goes to the voters. So let's talk about, let's hone in a little bit on why we're having this discussion. We're talking about council pay, and Section 18, that is the section of the charter where this language exists. And you can see, this is the original language in 1915 from the charter. And while I don't usually read things, I think in this particular case, I will. It basically, at that point, said that the salaries of the councilmen first elected under this charter shall be $50 per month. Thereafter, the council may, by ordinance, submit it to a referendum. At any municipal election, change the salary of members of the council. I added the emphasis to referendum and also to the word "any." And so again, that's what we were talking about back in August. It was any election, so we could have gone next month. We could have gone in March of 2024. And again, the forefathers basically said, look, the first time you change this, you can either change it here in the charter or you can go ahead and you can enact an ordinance, you can do a first reading and a second reading, but that's fine. You still have to give it to the voters through the referendum process and make sure that the voters approve that. I will tell you that Section 18 has never been successfully amended, and I'm going to go through that history with you. Again, we did not update this. I don't think there was really any need to. You can see the discrepancy. Back in August, this was on the PowerPoint. It shows you the top 10 cities. It shows you where Bakersfield is, and it followed through with the referral from one of you. It included Long Beach, and it included the city of Oakland. You see the little asterisk at the bottom, the $100. None of these includes any of the benefits from any of the cities, from Los Angeles to Anaheim, including Bakersfield. In the city of Bakersfield, depending on what level of insurance you are, whether you're a Level 1, 2, or family plan, you can go anywhere from $0 all the way up to $3,000. But the base, your base salary is $100 a month. Here's the chart for the survey cities. Again, it shows you where the city of Bakersfield is, and same caveat with additional benefits. I believe last time, councilmember Cor requested that we pull what the salary, what the base salary is for your colleagues across the street. This is what we have determined. It's the total annual pay right now of a little over $110,000 a year. And now I just want to go through again the same historical aspect that I did a year ago, again, with great help from the city clerk. Since 1920, there's been a total of 173 different charter amendments that the city of Bakersfield has proposed to its citizens. And of those 173, there's only been six ballot measures that really deal with council pay. It was in 1947, 1954. The main one was in, when I say the main one in 1956, the successful one was in 1956. We're going to get to that. 1974, 1988, and 1990. All of them failed, by the way. We're going to go through it, other than 1956. So 1947, again, you can see that that was the actual language that went to the voters. And this time in 1947, your colleagues from that time, they wanted to amend the charter. They weren't interested in the code. They just wanted to amend the charter. And they wanted basically to say that you were going to serve without pay. And thankfully, that failed. So then in 1954, they decided to do it differently, and they said, let's do an ordinance. Let's put the ordinance in the code. And they said, let's just get $200 a month. That failed. In 1956, they decided to do the same thing. They went by way of an ordinance, but they said, let's do it $100 a month. And then, again, a little bit on the Board of Equalization, that's somewhat irrelevant for purposes of this discussion, but that actually passed. And it was an ordinance, number 1079. It went to the voters at a special election, not a general election. And when that happened, it was the ordinance, and that was the first ordinance that went into the code. Originally, I think it was under 2.12. Don't worry about that. It was later renumbered. And now, if you go look in our code under Chapter 2.68, you will see where your salary is established at $100 a month because of that particular ordinance that the voters adopted. And that's where it is. Very simple language. The salary of council members shall be $100 per month. And then again, they added this section having to do with not just the Board of Equalization, but when you come and you sit through the lunch meetings regarding our annual budget, you get $20, not to exceed for five days. So if you're not getting that $20, let Christian know. So because that passed back in 1956, what happened is there was a little asterisk that went into our charter. So the charter, the first part of it stays identical to how it read in 1915, but there's one asterisk, and it says, hey, this was increased to $100 a month. See Section 2.68. So it's a very good cross-reference. Eighteen years later, back in 1974, your colleagues decided to try the charter amendment again. They didn't want to touch the ordinance. They were going to go back to the charter. And they said, why don't we just change the charter and have our salaries equal or equal to what our colleagues in general law cities get? That failed. In 1976, they went back and they said, let's try to amend the code, and we're going to go to $300 a month. That failed. Then again, in 1988, they went back to the charter. They said, let's try to amend the charter again, and they went to $6,000. That failed. Tried it again in 1990. Again, this time, they tried to amend the code for $700 a month, a minor increase really. That failed. There has not been any measure proposed on the ballot since 1990. And again, this section here in 1990 was actually presented to the voters as part of a special election. It did not go during a general election. We have not touched either the charter or the code relative to council salaries since 1990. All of this, again, was discussed back in August. This was also discussed back in August, and in front of you, you should have a one-page, it's entitled the Legiscan. It's front and back. I put it on the dais for all of you. There was a new law that actually went into effect in June of last year. It modifies the government code, and basically what it says is, if you're a general law city or you're a charter city, and you're a charter city that is silent on the topic of council pay, and I'm going to get back to that, but that's very important. We are not, right now, we're not silent on it, right? Because we have it in our charter and we have it in our code. But if you were silent on it, this new law basically says your salary can be determined by ordinance based on your population. So assuming we were silent on it, we obviously have a population of over 250,000 people, and so the maximum amount per month would be $3,200 per month. There is a CPI escalator that's in there. You can read that on that third bullet. You can also read it as part of the Legiscan that I gave you. The ordinance would not allow you to provide for automatic increases. I'm going to get back on this. So here are the options, and again, these options, for the most part, have remained the same, although I would tell you that I have, I think, made them a little bit more concise for your consideration tonight, because if you're going to do this, we need to get going and we need to do it. Option number one, you can leave the charter and the code the way it is. Option number two, you can submit a measure to the voters in 2024 that repeals the charter and the BMC section. And this would be a sample. Shall Section 18 of the charter and the BMC section 2.68 be repealed in their entirety? Why did I say that to you? I said that to you because if you were to repeal both the charter and the code, you would then be silent on the topic. If you were silent on the topic, you then go back to the law that I talked to you about that was new in June of last year. You could theoretically then enact an ordinance, have first reading, have second reading, and you would be at $3,200 a month. You would not have to go to the voters. If you did that, again, I think it's little B as in boy on that Legiscan tells you that if you wanted less than that or you wanted more than that, you could go to the voters for that. But at a minimum, you could at least establish $3,200 a month if you were silent on the topic. That's option two. Option three, we could submit a measure to the voters again in November of 2024, which would amend both the code and it would add, I would say, two asterisks to the charter. We would keep the first one, and then we would add a second one. Again, it would say something simple. Shall the city of Bakersfield fix the pay of council members at? And you need to tell me what that number is. I don't know what that number is. It's a policy decision. But again, this option would allow you to put a salary, to put a number in there that's higher than the $3,200 a month, should you be silent on the topic. The last option, this slide is new. I did not have it back in August, and I think it does have some merit, and that is to wait until November of 2026, get a little bit of feedback from the community on the pay issue. I don't know how much feedback your previous councils had in 1956 when it was, you know, when it was successful. But perhaps, you know, again, perhaps there's a grassroots effort that favors a particular path forward. Maybe they even submit a petition, as I indicated to you earlier in the PowerPoint, where there's 15%. They don't have to, but at least you would have some type of, I guess, fuel to kind of help you, guide you in terms of which option, option number two or option number three, that you wanted to move forward with. Why do I say we need to get moving? Well, you have a couple, you have more than a couple of meetings. You have about seven meetings left until really the rubber meets the road. And if you're going to do something, we basically need to know, I need to know, the clerk needs to know, what it is that you want to do, because you have a couple of meetings where you need to decide which approach do you want to take? Do you want to repeal the ordinance in the charter and be silent? Do you want to amend the ordinance and the charter provision and put in a different amount? What is that amount to be? When is it going to take effect? Some of you caught me a little bit off guard. Back in January, you talked about, well, it's not going to be effective on the current council. It'll go into effect at some time in the future. Well, you need to have that discussion. You need to have a majority of you tell me, what does that language, what does that language look like to you? We have to determine what the ballot label language is. And again, that's very specific. For some of you that were here when we recently changed the charter to allow the city manager to choose an individual from outside the police department to be your potential next chief of police, that took quite a few meetings. I mean, we were here at 3:30, and we were working until 5 o'clock to really get that language down that you felt comfortable with in presenting to the voters. So again, this is the last slide, and then I'm open for questions and direction. Option one, again, leave everything alone. Option two, repeal the charter and the code by way of a measure. Option three, amend the code by way of a measure and add a second asterisk. Or option four, wait until November of 2026 and get support from the community. My thought would be that, should you choose that, there probably should be some additional guideline as to how you want to do that. You know, are you going to establish an ad hoc committee? Are you going to direct a particular department to kind of gather some support? But that you would certainly have enough time to do that. And so with that, I am open for questions.
Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I would like to say I'm for option four. I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say, but I think getting feedback from the community makes a lot of sense. We don't really know how they feel. We know in the past, they defeated every time. So I think you're very handicapped when you don't gather information first and we just throw something out there. Like that's a, you know, very minor chance of succeeding, and we spend money on it. So I think it's kind of a waste of time, especially when you don't go to the community. And I don't know what form that takes, but I know for the most part, the business community is the one who is going to be against it unless you persuade them they shouldn't be. And that's why workshops and talking with people and listening, I won't say just to them, but I'd say especially to them because they, you know, they have a lot of influence. I think that'd be the best way to go. The only other thing I'd say is if you really, I would add a fourth choice to your $3,200 a month and all of that. If you really want to get this over with and just put something out that might pass, if you just said, council gets minimum wage for the hours they put in. And I was adding up, okay, a couple of council meetings, some committees, maybe that's 15 to 20 hours a week. And even if you use 20 bucks an hour, you know, $300 to $400 a month, fine. The community might say, well, that's not much. You probably have to estimate it at. But if, because it's still very de minimis, but I think you'd get more sympathy for, well, should we at least pay a minimum wage for the hours they put in? It's still a service job. It's still a sacrifice. And I think you might eke that one by. I don't think you'd get anything else passed.
Mayor, if I may, there's two things. One, I forgot to add. In talking with the city clerk, it looks like it's going to cost a minimum of $175,000 to move forward with a, in November of 2024. And if I could, Mayor, with your permission, respond to councilmember Freeman on the prevailing, on the minimum wage. I would just tell you that if you really want to do that, and you have a majority of your colleagues that want to go that route, I would tell you that I would absolutely recommend that you wait until November of 2026, because I can tell you right now and sitting here that I can think of so many problems with that option, and I'm just sitting here hearing it for the first time. First of all, I'd like to know if you're going to get time cards and if you're going to clock in and clock out. And then, if I'm a member of the public, I am absolutely going to put in a public records request, and I am going to get those time cards from you, and I am going to audit you to make sure that you're spending that much time.
You have to make it so complicated.
Well, that's what you pay me the big bucks for.
All right. All right. I'm convinced, forget it.
Okay, but the language on that, too, would have to say, is it the minimum wage now? Is it the, do you get a cost escalator? So these are the types of things. These are good discussions to have, councilmember Freeman. I'm glad you brought it up. But these are, this is the type of dialogue that has to occur.
You're right. All of that could be, if you took it to the public, you had workshops, one alternative, do you pay them in wage? One, do you pay them $1,000? And let it all, let them discuss everything.
Correct.
You're right. It was just a thought, but I've said my piece.
Thank you, city attorney. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Jenny, can we go back to the slide that outlined the different times that this has been brought to the voters? Thank you. Since 1947, six ballot measures proposed to voters. So a couple of thoughts. Number one is, if we took a look at, let's say, the year 1900, councilmembers were receiving $50 a month. $50 in 1900 has the equivalent purchasing power today to about $1,800 a month. So we could argue that councilmembers in 1900 were being paid considerably more than councilmembers today. If we look at 1956, where the, an increase was passed, they were awarded $100 a month, compensated, I should say, $100 a month. That has the equivalent purchasing power today to about $1,120. There again. So councilmembers throughout time until the cost of living increased were being compensated at higher levels. And the reason why is because this is a commitment of time. Sure, it is a public service, and we all signed up for this job to run in Bakersfield, California, knowing the compensation level. And it is a public service for me. But as we look towards future councils, I think we ought to address this issue. I like what councilmember Freeman has brought up. I think it is really important for us to hear from the community, hear from stakeholders that have been good partners with the city over the years, particularly in our last ballot measure in 2018, when we adopted the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative. And I would like to make a motion tonight that we direct the city manager's office and the city attorney's office to work with key stakeholders, including but not limited to the Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce, the Realtors Association, the Current Tax Periods Association, to begin a conversation about council pay and ask the Chamber of Commerce to lead a coalition, a committee, community committee, that would then develop a recommendation for this council as we look towards November 2026.
Thank you. Now, councilmember Smith, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I agree with councilmember Freeman. I think, you know, the timing is such that, my experience, since I've been on the council going on 12 years, is that most of the community thinks, when people come up to me, they, you know, you guys should get paid more. You should get paid something. But to really engage the community and have conversations makes sense to me. So I would agree with that direction. I would ask, how much can staff be involved? I guess it's not like PSVS where it was a tax measure and staff could not advocate or really be involved.
Madam City Attorney.
Mayor, councilmember Smith, that's correct. We're not going to be able to really spend tax money, and that includes time, in order to, I would say, kind of get this up off the ground. I'm not really, I would assume at some point that the vice mayor would appoint some type of an ad hoc committee to really do most of the laboring or there. As the city attorney, I would tell you that I am reluctant to do much of it because I have to write the impartial analysis. And I think we could just do a little bit in terms of getting it up and running, but then we'd have to turn it over. We'd have to turn it over to the chamber, turn it over to the ad hoc or something along those lines. But very little, to answer your question, very little.
Very similar, then, to the PSVS.
It's identical. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, in other words, I could see us perhaps sending out an invitation or something along those lines. But then I would want someone from the council to kind of take the lead with the chamber, so Christian and I can look to that individual. individual.
Well, even, I mean, you mentioned ad hoc committee, but I mean, staff attends those and stuff, so that really wouldn't.
We would not be able to do that. That's correct, which is why I indicated it would have to be an ad hoc committee because that's generally not covered by the Brown Act and it wouldn't be staffed by staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very similar, as the Vice Mayor said, to PSVS, the engagement of the stakeholders. Staff was pretty much not involved.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. So one thing that I do want you to know is I was watching TV the other night and one of the ladies that's running for our senate position stated that she thinks minimum wage should be $50 an hour. So I don't think we want to do that. And I like, I like putting this off till 2026. Gives us time to think about it. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't really hear very well the, the last part of the Vice Mayor's comments on that. So maybe you could just repeat that for me?
Yeah, the, the motion was to defer this to November 2026 and to direct staff to reach out to key stakeholders to begin a conversation and request that they form a committee to develop recommendations and bring them back to the full city council. And I identified a few key organizations that I could think of, but I would not want to limit it to those key organizations, but would ask that the Chamber of Commerce, Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce, actually take the lead on this effort.
Okay. I'm a little leery on, on having the Chamber of Commerce be the, the spot on all of this. I, I think they need to be involved in it. But this is, this, it's not just a chamber. It's not just a business thing. This is for the entire community. And there's a lot more people that need to be involved in that other than just the chamber or, or some other, you know, taxpayer association. They'll be involved, but we need to broaden that out some to where everybody would have a chance to speak and participate in that. And I hope that we can do that. And I, I think we want to make sure that we put, not that we put, that we have an organization or a group that is very far-reaching in their, in, far-looking in what we're doing. So when we actually do start, start this process, everybody knows about what it is that we're trying to accomplish. There's nothing behind the table. There's, it's all above board. And I think we need maybe somebody other than, other than just the chamber. I think we need to go out and, and interview people that could make this work for us and go from there. I, I don't really want to kind of box us in tonight. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mayor, no, Councilmember Weir, thank you so much for the, the comments. I, I agree with you. I don't want us to limit the conversation to our business associations. I was just thinking as a, as a practical matter, what organization in the community really is best positioned and has capacity to actually lead out on an effort. So I, I agree with you and I hear your concern. I would like to amend my motion to direct staff to bring back this item in a future council meeting and establish a timeline so that we can work on this committee and actually work towards the November 2026 timeline.
Thank you. That's, thank you. That's much better for me.
I would also indicate, and again, I defer to the council on this. I have no problem taking this PowerPoint presentation to all of the groups that the Vice Mayor mentioned and any other group that a council member so desires and giving this its facts and, and letting that group know that, hey, your, your council is looking for your input and, and so reach out to the Vice Mayor, reach out to your council member, let them know, you know, where you stand on it. And maybe in that vein, maybe the grassroots effort, again, just kind of get started. You know, it's a seed to it. But I, I hear your motion and certainly that can be done.
So are we amending your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to go on record that I, I do support this motion that's on the table with the option four. I do think we need to have community input. But the last time this was brought up, I almost felt, I left here feeling like things should have been explained to the public better. We always talk about $100 a month compensation. Well, it's not $100 a month. It's $100 a month to serve. It's $700, $780 a month roughly for mileage, plus our health insurance, plus our dental insurance, plus our eye insurance. And for me, that's a total package of over $20,000 to sit on this dais. So I felt like that needed to come forward, that people understand what our total compensation is. Even though you call it benefits, it's still not $100 a month. So that was, that was the thing that the last time I wish I'd brought forward, I didn't bring it forward. So I want to bring that forward for the public's information. But I do think if, I'm, I'm satisfied with just leaving everything as it is. But if my colleagues feel like that we need to get more community input, then I can support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Cora.
Jenny, just a question for you. With the senate bill that we're reviewing, how do, what takes hierarchy? Just so I have an understanding of the legal process, city charters versus state law. And does this mean that we are not complying with this state law? How does, how does that work? If you could help me understand the legal interview.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Cora, the way that this particular law is written, it, it would apply if you're silent. So it, our charter basically trumps. But as I say, if you change that charter, you then follow state law.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Just in conversation with our colleagues, it's clear that the vast majority are leaning towards option four. And based on kind of the community discussions that will come from this, you know, it'll, I, I firmly believe it'll come to light that this is something that is sorely needed, necessary, and delayed within our city. And in reviewing the list of cities kind of across the state and those closer to us in population, you know, having a more modern context to a city that's growing as quickly as ours is, cities much smaller than us have understood the need to allow for teachers, firefighters, electricians, folks who are retired and still have expenses, veterans, those folks who still had demanding jobs, have demanding, kind of have demanding needs and within their lives, who aren't able to see themselves as being policymakers locally because it's not sustainable. Having, having council pay is more of an appreciation of your time and treats it like the, the real, the real work that it is and goes, goes beyond sometimes even what a full-time job requires. So I, I liked Councilmember Freeman's point of the minimum wage question and that being a possibility to explore, but at least wanted to just, you know, share that folks in the community, the sentiment is so strong that, as Councilmember Smith mentioned, it is, folks are in disbelief when they learn that this isn't something that comes with some kind of, it doesn't mirror what they've heard of in other cities and also their own expectations of their council person. They, residents are expecting for their council people to be available full-time to meet the needs of their district. And I think that's actually where the, where the gap is, is the expectation is that we are available full-time. We are there. We are serving, but it's challenging. And I'll speak for myself as someone who is a young person who has attained higher education and is driven, is on the council, but would love to be able to focus my full-time energy here. It is, the reality is that you basically work two full-time jobs. And in the future, I hope that's not the reality for other young people, the retired folks, people who see themselves joining a council and being able to give back into their community and knowing that maybe we missed the mark some places because this isn't full-time. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
Two, two, two remarks. One, if, if in future years you did, you know, significantly expand the compensation of council members so they had salaries, staff, remember, you will have to significantly expand city manager's staff to service those people. So it would be a, it would, you could probably multiply it by five, how much money it would cost you, because they will need staff to service the staff. Anyway, but what I'd like sort of added to the, the purpose of whatever committees formed, passed forth, which yet won't be the city, it'll need to be whoever the chambers, all the service clubs, how you get out to the community. But you might, Jenny, you might consider expanding your PowerPoint because one of the reasons you probably always have this turned down is nobody knows what the council does and doesn't associate any value with what the council people do. Not nobody, but the vast majority, and I mean the majority, do not know what city council people do. They don't know what the city council is in charge of. I don't think that we have a terrible problem in getting people to run for office. When any of us run unopposed, that's not a good thing. It means nobody cares. Nobody's interested. Lots of capable people could step forward and don't. And I don't think the community knows what we do, therefore doesn't attach any value to it. I don't think it's that they don't step forward because of $100 a month. I think they just say, you guys don't do anything. What do you do? I have people call me to talk about school issues or why aren't we fixing Isabella Dam, things, none of the things, things the county's in charge of. They do not know what the city council does. And therefore, it's hard to describe value to an organization when you have no idea what they do in the first place. So I think that's a big problem. And if we could maybe combine the purposes of this, whatever task force communication effort, to educate what does your city council do anyway, so that they knew if you're going to talk about compensation, compensation for what? What do these people do? I think it's very important that our community, which knows, I think, less than nothing about what the city council does, they don't know what the county does either. But we have a big educational problem here in awareness. And I think maybe we could help solve the problem a little and we'd get more people stepping forth to serve and run for office. And that would be a huge benefit to the community if they finally knew, oh, maybe it's, maybe it's worth doing whether they get paid or not. But right now, I think, I mean, we did a man on the street quiz. Nine out of 10 of them would have no idea what the city council did. So that's my, that's my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. One, one, actually two comments. One, to Councilmember Freeman, great point. I, I agree with you. You know, many people do not know what a city council does or what each council member really is responsible for and what really is our fault and not, by the way. But also, I, I think, you know, one of the things that we now have at our advantage and at our disposable, disposal is that we are now tracking all these different issues and service requests that come into the city in our respective wards. So I think that might be a, a really valuable tool to share with the community, actually what really each one of us in each ward is addressing every single month. And then finally, I, the reason I buzzed in to speak again was I wanted to lift up Councilmember Gray's point in, in, in total compensation. I think that's a really important point. I think, you know, we really need to have an honest conversation with our constituents, with the citizens of Bakersfield about really what we're talking about here. And it is total compensation. We should share that in fact, we do receive health benefits and other health-related benefits, but so do other cities. And, and that has to be outlined as well. And I think that even still, when you see comparatively, we are still far below the average. And so we, we should do some additional legwork and research to get fair comparisons and really shed some more light on what, what really is the total compensation and how that relates to the total compensation in other places. I know that's much more difficult than what, than what we did before with Moss Adams, but I think that work is required in order for us to have a real, meaningful conversation with our community.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Smith, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just reinforce a couple items. The, you know, coming back with a timeline and, you know, what, how this really falls out because we're kind of extending because we let it slip in my mind a little bit. So two years flies by pretty fast. So, you know, what really is the plan? And I would say this reinforced also that, you know, educating the community on what council actually does. You know, when I answer the, you know, my cell phones, numbers on the website, and when I answer it, they, they're surprised, you know. I thought I'd get staff, you know, I thought I'd get somebody. But so, you know, and nobody mentioned, we have committee meetings. We have a lot of conversations and a lot of time. And we do a lot of things. And, you know, I'm proud of the progress that the city makes and where we're going. And so I think that's part of the education. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say really quickly that I agree with just about everybody on this dais on this issue. I think it's wise of us to support the Vice Mayor's motion and move forward with a ballot measure for 2026, engaging all of our community and stakeholders. I just wanted to make a quick comment. If I'm not mistaken, it was last year when we were having conversations about moving forward with the park rangers. And there was considerable conversation about how much we should pay those individuals. At the time, we had not adjusted for the rest of city staff. And there was some concerns because we had gone just a little bit over to make sure that our park rangers were going to be compensated at a competitive level, not just do what we do for the rest of staff. And most of the rationale for that was that there were some serious concerns because of COVID, because of the great retirement, that we could not get anybody in the door to apply in the first place. And furthermore, the second concern was that we wouldn't get folks who were actually competitive for the jobs that we want, that they were applying for. Well, we went out on a limb and we decided that we were going to move forward with that pay rate, which was higher than the rest of city staff for those similar positions. I believe we floated 18 to 20 positions, if I'm not mistaken, Christian. And I hate to put you on the spot, but how many applications did we get for those 18 to 20 positions? I want to say it was more than 100 or more.
Yeah. So Councilmember Arias, Mayor and Council, just a couple of quick data points, best I can off memory. I would reflect that we, we, on the, where we landed on the salary, you know, we did tier it at the same tier as code enforcement. So I want to be clear that we weren't necessarily, you know, paying a higher wage than, than like positions that we thought were at that level of responsibility. But we did say, we, you know, we do recommend that higher level of responsibility, not a lower level entry position. We, it is for 18 positions. We did have more than 100 applicants. We actually had 60 qualified that met all of our minimum qualifications. It was a long set of interviews, but did lead to having a very large candidate pool of very qualified folks. We've had some challenging entry level classifications that have continued to see turnover over the last two to three years, that may run a 10% vacancy rate, which is above average. If you look at industry standard, it's probably a 5%. standard, it's probably a 5% vacancy rate. And for our park rangers, we were actually able to fill 16 of those 18 positions within about a two- to three-month period, and move really fast, because we had a very strong candidate pool, and we've had very little turnover since we hired those folks.
Thank you so much for that information. I think the point holds true, that when you make these salaries competitive, whether that be for staff or for this council, we should use the same rationale. Make it competitive, and getting back to Council Member Freeman's point, it is part of what we have to do in order to increase participation at the highest of levels. So, with that, I support the Vice Mayor's motion.
Thank you, Council Member Arias. Council Member Cora.
Just to return to Council Member Freeman, you had made a point about the staffing, and an interesting kind of survey of other cities, with each council, for example, in the city of Fresno, which I referenced previously, but they, more recently, in more recent history, have kind of changed their layout, council pay, and that sort of thing. But, what I've heard, what I've learned from folks who are like the chief of staffs of their city councils, those folks actually remain even longer than some of the council members themselves. And so, they retain this institutional knowledge that becomes not a burden to the city manager's office in their city, or for other departments, actually becomes supportive, and actually supplements the work. And they kind of have a history that they're able to share across those offices. Not only that, but those who end up taking up jobs as legislative assistants, admin assistants, chiefs of staff, and who tend to work for these city council members, have ran for office themselves. So, they have, they had such an intimate experience with learning how city governance works, they were able to imagine themselves in those offices. And I think that is an important place to cultivate local leaders as well, and not necessarily just think of it as like a financial burden. But, if we want to really imagine how we are, you know, you're saying that any election where someone doesn't run against you is, you know, that's not a good thing. I agree. I think in any working democracy, you have a competitive election. But, it's also for us to think of how we're creating those positions where leadership can be cultivated in the most intimate way, and I can't think of a better way than young people, or anyone really, to have the opportunity to even legislative research at the very local level, at the city level. And even folks who work in city hall, maybe we'll be able to recruit them to, you know, and do some of that legislative research. But, I wanted to add that as being something that maybe goes into the points discussed when we see this move forward, so. And I wanted to echo Council Member Arias' point of making it competitive. We may start with a minimum wage, but if this is something we're punching to 2026, we may as well, we might as well research how this becomes a livable wage for folks, to actually see themselves there, and transition from other careers, and see themselves as policymakers as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Closed session, item 4A. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, closed session regarding "Bring Back the Kern Water Audit, California at L versus the City of Bakersfield at L."
Moved adjourned to closed session.
We're adjourned to closed session. And welcome, it looks like we have some students in the audience. Welcome. It's always good to have you here. We go into closed session, and we'll be back for the next meeting, which starts around 5:15, or whenever we finish that session. But, thank you for being here. Reconvening, the 3:30 city council meeting. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There was only one item tonight in closed session, and there is no reportable action on that item. It should be reflected, the Council Member Cora recused herself based on a potential source of income and appearance of impropriety. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 5:27. Thank you all for being so patient. We will start the next meeting in just a few minutes. We need to give technology just a minute to switch out, and our council members to come in from closed session. But, thank you all.